Welcome to the August 4, 2022 Parma City School Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Ms. Roth.
Present.
Ms. Carvis.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Rudolph.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn. Present. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Could you please monitor the livestream throughout the meeting so that if there's any technical difficulty, it can be addressed?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. So this brings us to information to the board, Dr. Smiley.
I don't have too many new pieces of information, although I do invite everyone to our district kickoff, which is August 20th from 10:00 to 12:00. 10:00 to 12:00 is correct at Byers Field. It's a great event. You see a lot of community resources and welcome students back. And we'll have some special events for incoming kindergarten students as well. So always a great way to start the school year. I also would love to encourage anyone who have about an hour and a half on their hands, which probably isn't too many people, but we just had what I thought was a really healthy, really productive work session, all about safety and security. We had a couple of local experts on the matter, and we also talked through some considerations that we might want to take into account, given recent passage of House Bill 99. And a lot of folks think that everything's a rubber stamp, and we just show up, and bow yes. And the reality is that that work session, I think, is a great example of how we have open conversation about very difficult subjects, and we're very transparent about it. That was all open and still available to watch on YouTube. And it really was a strong moment in terms of boardsmanship that we had this evening. Also, thank you to Joe Ridgely, who has led our safety and security team and our efforts. I think tonight was really a validating point for Joe. We had, again, several local experts that came in and said Parma is actually ahead of the curve in a lot of what we've done. I thought it was excellent information that we provided, but also it was really reinforcements of the effort that we put in. So that's all I have.
That's awesome. Thank you. Communications, Mrs. Carvis.
Dr. Smiley pretty much just mimicked everything I was just going to say, except for I just wanted to thank Amy and Spopik and anybody else who contributed to, and Gary, anybody else who contributed to the awesome movie nights that we had at Byers Field. Gerazo, anybody who was part of that just did a phenomenal job, and I love seeing our community utilize our spaces in ways other than typical educational ways, and it was just, I love seeing that.
Athletic place, right?
Yes.
Place, it was something.
Yep.
Treasure. Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
I was going to say, I think she's got a couple.
Mrs. Roth.
I got a ton.
All right.
A ton. But, you know, we can't do everything tonight, and I really want to spend some more time organizing my notes. But I attended the Ohio School Safety Summit this week, the first one that they held. This is an organization run by the state or set up by the state in 2019, but because of COVID, they haven't had any summits until this year. And I went to four plenary sessions and six workshops, everything that was offered regarding school safety. And boy, was that a great experience and a wonderful opportunity to learn a lot. I have a special interest in school safety, but beyond that, I'm certainly no expert in it, but boy, it did give me a lot to think about. And I took about 35 or 40 pages of notes.
Wonderful.
You know, I'm not a screenshot person, I'm sorry to say, but I took a ton of notes, talked personally with several of the presenters. And just to give you an idea, those of you that are familiar with school safety here in Ohio or even nationally, Ken Trump was there and presented at a workshop. He was local from Cleveland, but anytime there is a tragic incident in schools nationally, you'll find him on cable news there calling him.
But he used to work for Parma, right?
I don't know if he worked for Parma. I know he did some for Cleveland.
I think he worked for Parma a little year or two.
Maybe many years ago, he did some stuff for Parma.
I remember him coming on.
But I talked with him, and I would like to share some of his thoughts at some point. And we don't have time to do all this tonight. But he was one, Frank DeAngelis, who was the principal at Columbine when that tragedy happened, that he was a keynote spoke for an hour and a half, a lot of information there. The Secret Service, who is very involved in school safety investigations, but they, I mean, they study this sort of stuff and go through stuff. So I brought some of the publications.
On the list, though.
Yeah, this is for, I brought enough for each of you, including Dr. Smiley.
I just found some.
Yeah. The marker again, yours. The one pamphlet has to do with incidents that have occurred. I think the 2019 one is that. And the 2021 publication has to do with incidents that were averted. And so there's a lot to be learned from the Secret Service. They spoke for an hour and a half, too, at one of the keynotes, and then the spiral about school safety assessments. So if you get a chance to take a look at any of those materials, maybe we can talk about it some other time. But Steve Sroka also, many of you may be familiar with him. He works out of Lakewood, but he speaks nationally on issues, really a lot of, in the past, how I had first heard him talk 30 years ago, I remember being in a ballroom with 1,500 people, you could hear a pin drop from him, you know, giving his presentation, a lot about kids with drugs and, you know. But he's now, oh, doing this Power of One. So these are Boomerless fans, Power of One. And I'll just emphasize, the Power of One is we all have a lot of ability to influence things and to help kids. And I'll do just a couple of takeaways from some of the stuff, some of the workshops, because there was a common thread in many of the different speakers that, of the workshops that I attended. And while there is no profile for one of these perpetrators of mass violence, there are a lot of things in the background that they will suffer from, and that might be, you know, drug and alcohol use in the home, abuse in the home, lack of a parent in the home, being raised by somebody other than the parents, certainly things like bullying and social difficulties, financial distress in the home, a lot of things that, when you find out about the background of some of these perpetrators, those are things that they have experienced in their lifetime. And also, you all see every time there is a tragic incident, that there are many warning signs that have come out, that if anybody had acted on those, how much different the outcome could have been. And something that I loved hearing in so many of these workshops is not just prevent the tragedy, save that kid. Don't let it get to that point. And they stress so much about relationships and awareness of how to help people and not let kids be in a space where they feel their only option is to do something tragic and awful because they don't have any other outlet in their life. So school culture was a big discussion point, and I can share some more of that as we go. But that was a really big deal and a lot of really great information, I felt, at least I benefited from it. And one other thing that I'll say in relationship to the presentation that we had for our work session is there was also a lot of stress on practice and training, not just initial practice and training and this minimal certification as we go along, but, and not just in regards to firearms, but the plans for what to do should the stuff hit the fan and how to handle those things. When people are greatly stressed, when they're in shock because an incident happens, a lot of times, if they have not been regularly reminded and trained, they lose their ability to think about what they ought to be doing in certain situations or what the best outcome or their best thing to do. So several people mentioned that, you know, the ongoing training, the regular training. And so I'm just throwing that out there as something, you know, that we need to think about. And I will tell you one thing, because you touched on it in the safety session, Dr. Smiley, and I wrote down, I thought, oh, that's one of the things I wanted to mention that Ken Trump talked about. When you send out regular messages to families, add a little safety message, just some little thing each time, you know, in your PTA bulletin, in your notification from the principal without stuff, in the monitor, whatever we're doing, add a little safety thing. Number one, it lets people know that it's important to you, it's of value in your district, it is something that you pay attention to, give them confidence about safety in our district, but also to, this is a way to remind about also what to do, how to be safe. And it really, really made a lot of sense in the context of all the things that I was listening to. So anyway, thanks for putting up with my comments. When I get through my 30 pages of notes that I took, or 40.
You said 40.
Yeah, it was 35 to 40. I went to 10 things, and I took three to five. One, I took six pages of notes, but.
So we expect a PowerPoint presentation maybe in two weeks?
Might not get that, but I will.
Four weeks then. Four weeks. We'll give you four weeks.
I know that we could expect very neatly handwritten copies of Cindy's notes with highlighted marks and stars and such things.
Well, I will, I would like to share that with you, because I thought there was a lot of good information.
Yeah, 100%.
If nothing else, it's food for thought, I think, you know, something that makes you think about, you know, this whole big picture of safety that we're doing, and I could do this or some other aspect of this, multiple types, you know, what we had, the safety, whatever, work session that we had. I think there's a lot to talk about, and we could do more.
Thank you for sharing this stuff, the materials. I look forward to reading that over tonight, maybe, or at least the next couple of days. So thank you for sharing that. I know that was a really good workshop that you went on to, a conference.
It was great. I would recommend that more folks go in the future.
Sure.
It really was valuable.
All right. Thanks so much. Ms. Nusio, you have anything for us?
I do.
Can you bring it up for me?
Okay.
Do you can alert this?
So I did send this to the board. This is something that the Parma Department of Education put on their website. It's the COVID dashboard. It shows all the funds we've received since COVID started in March of 2020 and what percent we've spent on that.
Can you go up, could you bring it up a little, maybe they could see that?
So last one, ARP ESSER. Okay, let me stick it a little smaller. There you go. So it says we've only spent 14% of it. That's claimed, that's not spent. So what you have to do is you have to spend the money first, put in a request to the Ohio Department of Education, and then they reimburse you. Right now, our ESSER fund is minus $1.9 million. When we make a claim for that, then that number's going to go up, and they'll send us the money, and when we back around zero, then spend more money. We're spending money continuously. I think every payroll, we're spending a little over $100,000 in salaries. So it's not like we have a real plan, it's just we have two more years to spend this money. We're at 14%, but that doesn't mean we're going to leave money on the table, we're not going to spend it.
And really, because of the high degree of supplanting we're doing, meaning, you know, offsetting general fund expenses that we would otherwise already pay, counselors, teens, home liaisons, et cetera, there really is no ESSER pot of money that we haven't allocated or planned to use for supplanting.
Correct. So you might get questions in the community, why have you only spent 14%? It's claimed, and you have everything allocated, so it could be spent. Yep. So that's what, yeah, that's what, let you know what this is.
Yeah, I've never seen, I've never seen, you know. Very good. Thank you. Thanks very much. Did he have some papers assigned?
Okay.
It's not just me, then, this isn't. All right, so we have a couple of amendments, right?
Yes, we do. So 2022-08-301, which relates to resignations, it's Stephanie Berry, who was assistant principal at Parma Senior, she resigned effective today, and Steve Carey, who was the Ridgebrook principal, he's resigning effective tomorrow. That's the first one. Then there's 2022-08-303, appointment of Lee Walden, who's right here, for the Ridgebrook principal job, effective tomorrow. And it looks like Finsky, who would take Lee's position, she wasn't going to be at Hillside, and she's to be effective tomorrow also.
We appreciate the board's consideration on this. We really try not to make walk-ons of practice at all, but sometimes if there's walk-on after walk-on, folks think you're trying to sneak things through, and this is a unique circumstance. We've talked about this in terms of consolidation and the effects of, you know, folks being a little bit nervous about jobs and looking elsewhere, and so we've had some late movements, and we really appreciate this consideration because it allows our folks to get to work officially as soon as possible.
All right. All right. I appreciate it. All right, so I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-288, adoption of amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-288. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-08-288 has been approved. Excellent. Any public participation for this portion? Nothing today. Excellent. So a huge, all right, so I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-289, approval of the written record of proceedings from July 14, 2022, regular, and July 27, 2022, special board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-289. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Today's resolution, 2022-08-289, has been approved. All right, that brings us to curriculum. Ms. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-290, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022 to 2025 school years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-290. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-08-290 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-291, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-291. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-291 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-292, approval of the Parma City School District family handbook for 2022-2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-292. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-292 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-293, approval of the Parma City School District First Step preschool family handbook for 2022-2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-293. Any questions or comments from the board? None, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022-08-293 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss this evening, that will conclude curriculum.
I do want to mention real fast that I appreciate that this was done in a timely fashion and presented to us so that we could read it over. I thought maybe someone might have some questions, so I appreciate you guys coming in.
Yeah, this is our First Step principal, Lara Savilek. She was nice enough to come tonight in case there are any questions. We appreciate your presence.
I didn't have a handbook? No, I thought it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really good.
Yeah, that's what I said, I just, I appreciate you coming, and that's why I just mentioned that. Okay? So thank you very much. Does this, Mr. Rudolph?
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-294, continue to provide transportation for First Step students.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm looking at it, I'm not reading something about.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-294. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-294 has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-295, the approval of determined safety zones.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-295. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-295 has been approved.
All right, unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph, very good job. I was a little blindsided on that first second. I was going to second myself, but I don't think that works.
I apologize.
That takes us to finance, Mr. Kreis, please.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-296, approval to enter into an agreement with Charles E. Harris and Associates, Inc., for a month-end cash balance reconciliation for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-296. Any questions or comments from the board?
I wonder, have I had this on? So one of our, one of my colleagues, the transgene, her friend back, and she does our reconciliations and, you know, planning on coming back soon, but I don't know how, what she's going to be able to do. And when I hire CPA firms, I like to spread it around between different ones, because if you spread it around, they're going to pick up something that another firm missed. So this Charles E. Harris associate is my former employer, but I've worked for them 10 years, so I have no financial interest at all in this. It's just another one that I use for work.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. And I will do roll call.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-296 has been approved.
Just wait, just totally distracted you. Here, here we go. Sorry, it was my fault.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-08-297, approval to enter into a contract with K through 2 Business Consulting, Inc., for preparation of the district's five-year financial forecast.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-297. Any questions or comments from the board?
It's actually K-12, we must have a misprint on your.
It's K-12. Okay, so it says K-2.
Oh, yeah.
K-12. All right, so any questions or comments from the board, then? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-297 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-08-298, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-298. Any questions or comments from the board? Why is there a red number on that?
So it's a grant fund, 572 is Title I, expanding opportunities grants, and OD makes adjustments in their allocations all the time, either up or down, sometimes based on the number of students you have. It could be, sometimes they use poverty rates. Our poverty rate percentage is 41%. When they did this, it might have been 43%, so they say, well, now you have less poverty rate, so we're going to have to take away some of the funds. And they do all the time, they adjust grant funds. That's why there's a negative.
Okay. Great, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-298 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-299, approval of then-and-now certificates over $3,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-299. Any questions or comments from the board? I know this was a favor of Mr. Tenrovich's, and I don't, but can you explain some of these? Sure.
A lot of, some of these have to do with, we have blanket purchase orders, which allows you to purchase anything, so we say supplies for Home Depot, for example, but what would be for $20,000? And you can have multiple checks paid out of that because the guys have to go there, Home Depot, and buy stuff. But at the end of the year, you have to close blanket purchase orders. So some of these are blanket purchase orders, so we had a closure in June 30th, but in preparation of the fiscal year-end close, we start closing everything around June 15. So if an invoice comes in on like June 20th, we're not saying it till the next year, but we have to open a new purchase order on 7/1, but we already got the invoice, so that's the, Huntington, that's our energy note on, I think, Windows or something, new Windows reinstalled or something, whatever, it was prior to me, this is our last payment, it just came early. It came on 6/15, we closed our purchase orders by then, and we opened it up on 7/1.
Last bill.
Last on the energy notes, so we have no debt right now.
That's awesome.
How many, how long was that being paid for?
10 years, maybe?
10. Yeah.
The only, I'm sorry, the only thing we do have is the TAs. You're paying that through 2027.
Want to go ahead and do roll call, then?
Sure. Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-299 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-300, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-300. Any question or comments from the board? My typical comment would be, thank you very much for these fine people remembering Parma City Schools. There's a lot of fun stuff up there, so we appreciate that you thought of Parma City Schools in your donations and making sure our children have some things to look forward to. It looks like some prizes and stuff. So, excellent, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Ms. Carvis.
Yes.
Ms. Roth.
Yes.
Mr. Rudolph.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-300 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis, I appreciate that. Legislation, Ms. Carvis?
No, I think we handled pretty much everything with House Bill 99 and the work session and some other stuff, so I would just wait until we have some further clarification on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks very much. I was a little distracted. So it brings us to human resources, Ms. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-301, as amended.
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-301 as amended. Approval of the following certificated exhibits. Confirmation of certificated appointment. Confirmation of certificated replacement. Confirmation of stipend amounts. Confirmation of supplemental appointments. Confirmation of supplemental contract. Confirmation of change in certificated assignments for the 2022, 2023 school year. Approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence. Acceptance of certificated resignation. Acceptance of certificated administrative resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-301. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call Ms. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-301 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-302. Acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-302. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call Ms. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-08-302 has been approved, and I wish, let's see, Happy Days. I've known her for quite some time. She's a great, great teacher, a great person, has some great kids.
And I wish she was here so we could say that to her in person.
Hopefully she's watching. I was totally doubting, but maybe.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-303 as amended. Confirmation of certificated administrative appointments replacement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-303. Any questions or comments from the board? I'm sure Dr. Smolik, you have something to say, yes?
Do you want to, you want to vote first, or do you want to?
We can, if you'd rather do that. Sure, you can do that first, I'll do it first.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
I really don't know. Of course, yes. So, Resolution 2022-08-303 has been approved.
So, yeah, now, I would love to thank the board for approving our changes here. As you know, one of our former administrators saw the different opportunity in a different district, and we are very grateful that we had two people from within the organization that were prepared and ready to step up and are ready to accept a new challenge in their career. The first is Megan McAskey, who has been with us for her entire career? Her entire career, starting as an intervention specialist and rising up through the ranks. She had been a supervisor of special education that was, through the entirety of knowing her during my tenure, and really has distinguished herself first. She's very exceedingly bright. And that in a constantly changing field of special education, you have to have somebody who can command that detail and then be able to explain that to sort of the forces. And Megan will excel in that role, she has excelled in that role, in her supervisor role. She also is an extremely hard worker. We have all received emails from Megan at 4:30 in the morning. I don't think that was on the front end of her day. I think that was most likely a continuation of her prior day. Megan is highly thought of through the organization, and we could not be happier to introduce her tonight as the Director of the Office of Exceptional Children. Would you like to say anything, Megan? Which one?
Dr. Smolik pretty much said everything that I would say. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I look forward to continuing that at our school.
We're happy to have you.
That's what she's.
Keep the keeper.
So a little nugget, because, you know, we can't let her get off that easy, although she clearly is a woman of few words. She is running through an injury that she sustained doing a hold on one of our students. So that tells you a couple of things. Number one, she's really tough, right? And number two, she's, she's in the trenches, and that's why people really respect her. She's, she knows our kids, she knows our teachers, certainly directors, a little bit of a step away from that, but I know that she'll continue to have that, that, you know, school-centric view, so congratulations, Megan. Second is Brittany Hales. As Megan ascends into the leadership position, we had to replace Megan, and Brittany has stepped up. Brittany has also been with us for your entire career.
Yes.
And she has been an intervention specialist as well, at the secondary level, Hillside, Anne Parma Senior High, department chair, so she really has had all of the experiences that could prepare her for this role. And I know she comes highly recommended by the committee that put her through a relatively rigorous interview process. We're thrilled that she is taking that next step. Again, it's, it's the mark of a healthy organization to be able to promote from within. Folks know your systems, they're strong leaders within, and we're really excited and we congratulate you, Brittany. We can clap for Brittany. Any words for us, Brittany?
Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity, I'm very excited. Like Dr. Smolik said, I've been here for my entire career, so it's pretty exciting to see where this next step takes me.
Awesome, thanks, Brittany. I also, I want to say it's extremely classy of Sue Garcia to be here as well to support. She is our elementary supervisor, Brittany will be at the secondary level, but we thank Sue for, for the mentorship that she will provide, certainly a wealth of wisdom and experience, and we're grateful that you're still part of our team.
Thank you. We do appreciate you ladies making the decision to stay with Parma as you grow your careers. That is one of my favorite things that we get to witness as board members, is folks come up through the ranks. And while I was very sad to see Mr. Hoon go for very selfish reasons, because I adore him, I am so excited to have you on board and then you sliding over. I just think it's going to be incredible, and you guys are going to be a wonderful team, so I'm excited.
We actually gave Megan an award at the end of last year, saying, "Thank God you're still here" award. For exactly that reason, that we were really thrilled she was still part of our organization. And look what happened over the summer. We actually.
Figured a bit more awards there for the end of the school year.
Yeah, I mean, it turned out to be a little bit, a little bit of a premonition, I guess. Where is Leah and Lisa in this? Is there another resolution coming?
No, that was amended, that resolution has amended.
So is it, I didn't see that.
It will be added after the meeting.
Oh, okay, all right. So let's introduce Leah then, too? Glad I asked? It'd be really awkward, really.
I thought I'd out of it.
So Leah came to us from the Constellation Network, which is obviously one of our, you know, competitors. And when she was with Constellation, she was literally one principal for four schools, which I think is really impressive, that she was able to do that at a high level. And we hired her last year to be a dean, and Ridgebrook staff fell in love with her. Staff fell in love with her, the kids respect her, the parents respect her. We had to move quickly on this because, you know, we obviously want to get a principal in place. So we interviewed today, and I can't tell you, we've done a lot of interviews in our, in our time, and, you know, we always are grateful to hear nice things about people. Adra Oswald, who's a veteran staff member at, at Ridgebrook. And Jen Olson, who is the PTA president, has also worked with a number of principals. We haven't eventually cut them off, like, we had already made the decision for Leah, and they just wanted to go on and on and on. And another story, another story, let me tell you this, let me tell you this. I mean, the decision was extremely easy, she's impressed us at the central office level as well. If she can be a successful principal of one, of four schools, we think that, you know, her future at Ridgebrook being one school is extremely bright, and we're thrilled that you are with us in taking this step. So Leah?
Thank you, I am grateful and excited. It's like a dream come true. I absolutely adore the Ridgebrook staff. I was really excited about Hillside, too, but things fall into place and everything happens for a reason, and I can't wait. So thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thanks. You want to, you have some introductions as well? Hey, you want to introduce?
Yes, this is my daughter Reagan. Was it hi?
Hi Reagan.
Hi. And this is a very close family friend, Teresa.
Hi.
What happens, Teresa's also a new monitor at Ridgebrook.
Aw.
Yes, so she joined our team last year.
Excellent, excellent. Well, thanks for coming in. Clap for Leah.
I also think that's a pretty, how things fell in place, the continuity that's going to provide for our staff and our students, keeping a familiar leader in this, like, that's something that's very fortunate, they should feel very lucky that that's what they're, they're getting right now.
So speaking of continuity, the, the fourth person on there was Lisa Kavinsky. And she asked me, and I said, no, we don't typically have assistants, you know, come to the meetings, but, so Lisa interviewed as well for Ridgebrook, and I have to tell you, I mean, she really was impressive. Lisa's only been with us for one year as well. She was a dean last year at Hillside and Green Valley, and Michelle and Jackie Marconi both, you know, loved her. She was going to go to Ridgebrook this year because we downsized that dean, we won't have, you know, a halftime dean at Hillside and Green Valley. And she, she came in and, I have to say, I mean, we liked her for a year, but the job she did in the interview today, I mean, we really have a rising star. And so now her move is to replace Leah as the assistant principal at Hillside. But again, talking about continuity, Michelle Cook's thrilled because Lisa was there, you know, half the time last year, so it really fits in well with sort of the grand scheme of things. And for us, it's great because of the continuity, for Lisa, it's great because it's another step in her career, and we're very excited for her as well. I don't think we have to clap for her because she's not here. So congratulations to our newly appointed administrators, you're not new to Parma, but you're new to these roles, and we're very excited to work with you in these new positions. Congratulations.
I will add my congratulations to all three of you ladies, and I think something extra special about right now is you're coming in a little bit later in the cycle of when people sometimes know that they're going to have these positions because of very late resignations. And so kudos to you, and I can't imagine what you're going through right now, and it is crazy getting ready for the beginning of the school year anyway. And I can just imagine, you folks are, you're probably up all night anyway. So 4:30 is probably no big deal because you're, you've got a lot to do to get ready for the school year, so best wishes to you for a lot of satisfaction in your new positions and a lot of success with your students.
Thank you.
Hit the ground running, ladies, you're going to have to, right? Hit the ground running. Next resolution, please.
I'm sorry. Um, we're on 04.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-304. Approval of revised administrative salary schedule.
Second. Jumping the gun?
I jumped it. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-304. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Ms. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-304 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-305. Approval of the following classified exhibits. Confirmation of classified appointments replacements. Confirmation of change of classified assignments. Confirmation of classified resignations. Approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence. Approval of classified stipend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-305. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Ms. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-305 has been approved.
Okay, Resolution, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-306. Confirmation of classified administrative appointments replacements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-306. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Ms. Nusiel.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-306 has been approved.
I'd like to comment on Pam, that was good. So we were lucky enough to steal Pam from Maria. Obviously, our transportation director, Ms. Malika, also came from, from Maria, so she was able to tap into her network of contacts to add Pam to her staff. We are fortunate in that she actually will be able to drive the bus as well. That's one of the requirements that we've tried to, to make. You know, we're razor-thin in terms of margins to be able to open school right now. We're hopeful to conclude a, a contract with OC relatively soon so that we have a more competitive wage for our bus drivers. For the meantime, it really needs to be all, all hands on deck at the garage, and Pam will be an asset in that. And, you know, we've gone over and met with her, and she's, she's really pleasant to work with as well in the office, and the customer service aspect in that role is huge. I mean, that, that tends to be the person often answering the phone, the bus is late, et cetera, the bus left my kid, et cetera, et cetera. So really excited to, to have Pam, and also grateful for Corky's ability to, to, to network and be able to, to steal talent, essentially.
Some bus drivers falling?
Probably not, so we would finish the contract that would have a competitive wage.
Just throw it in there and see. Ms. Bratz.
Oh, that's right. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-307. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-08-307. Authorize an agreement for a school resource officer at the City of Palmer Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-307. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this one, on the front end. This is really an expansion of the program that we implemented last year at Greenbrier and Shiloh with Officer Curtin. We really were extremely impressed by the presence he had, and, I mean, it really was markedly different with him in the building as compared to not. The value he adds in terms of being there on a routine basis, that's his job, he's not coming off of a night shift, you know, where he's picking up some hours and sort of half asleep at the desk, not that that's what some of our other folks do, but it's tempting, I mean, that they're going on 16 hours of work as police officers. So to have people that can come in and actually know our kids and know that, you know, I'm here to be invested in this school community is really an advantage. I know the chief of police is thrilled that we're adding to the staff in terms of SROs. Chief Bobek has really been complimentary of our commitment to this program. So this is a two-year agreement, which is important to explain that as well. Obviously, Palmer Senior High is a one-year prospect at this point, and so that officer will transition to Normandy at the end of this year. This is something we will look to continue, honestly, into the future. You know, we try to make revenue-neutral movements, and this was essentially revenue-neutral in terms of reducing, obviously, what we're paying for shift police as well as some monitor positions. So this is not really some type of exorbitant cost that we're taking on, it really is a replacement. So we're really excited, and I thank Dr. Schneider for his work on the nuts and bolts of the contract and the back and forth of the police department, but I continue to think that this SRO program, you know, as we talk about school safety, these folks have their vested interest in our kids and in our schools, and certainly have their ears to the ground, so I'm hopeful that you will approve.
Yeah, yeah, this, Curtin was exceptional.
Absolutely. I am thrilled to see this coming about to have more, and I hope we expand the program in the future because I don't want to have to go back to the safety summit, but I will briefly, just to say, one of the things that was a screaming issue across the board was how much school safety is dependent upon relationships, and what a big deal that is in connecting with students and making them feel that someone cares about them, someone they can build a trusting relationship with, because some of our kids don't have that outside of the school walls. And SROs were a big deal with that, you know? It's a really important link to keeping our schools safe, so I'm thrilled to see this and hope we do more in the future.
Anybody else? Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Ratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-307 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss this evening, that will conclude Human Resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Ratz. Did we need photo ops? Amy, did you want to do photo ops with our new principal and stuff, or are we worried about that today?
We have been in the past, but we'd be thrilled to do so, sir. I was like, I was just thinking about it. Somebody wants to see himself in a tweed. Come on up.
Oh, my God. That means you, Leah, get up. It means all of you, ladies.
And Brittany and Megan, too.
Do it all the time, so I...
I'm interested about the timing, like, right before policies.
Congratulations.
While we put Steve in the middle, since it was his idea.
Stand next to me so I look better.
I was going to take a second one, too.
Can't get an Irish angle.
All right. We'll go high for Charlie to take the Irish angle. One, two, three. Guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Nusio. Ratz, that takes us to policies, Mr. Carvis.
Yes, so this first whole spout I'm going to read off are all tech changes. So I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-308. Approval of the technical changes made to the following policies. Policy 0149, access to records. Policy 0151, organizational meeting. Policy 0152, officers. Policy 0153, appointees. Policy 0155, committees. Policy 2440, summer school. Policy 2451, alternative school plans, programs. Policy 2520.01, library media, material selection and adoption. Policy 5514, use of bicycles. And policy 5515, use of motor vehicles.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-308. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying no, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Ratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution 2022-08-308 has been approved.
This is the first reading of the following revised policies. Policy 2370.01, blended learning. Policy 6110, grant funds. And policy 6325, pyramid federal grant and funds. And unless any other board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policy 40.
Thank you, Mrs. Carvis. Any information requested by board members? No. Opportunity, I have questions written to the record, I have a couple. I'll read them in order I receive them. First one is from Mr. Charles McLean from 3264, Winter Drive in Palmer, Ohio. His question is, he wishes to have the question written tonight's record and answered within the seven to twelve period. So he has quite a bit here, and I'm going to read it verbatim. He's asked, "Can we speak to why certain schools have gotten a vastly higher amount of funds than others from the governor of the wine's new school security grant?" And I do believe we answered that already. "Does this mean that those schools are less equipped, if equipment is old to handle security threat? Can you describe those schools' current security measures versus what you plan on improving? Are all outside doors leading into the schools locked from the inside so that no one can enter? Are there locks on each individual classroom door? How are you ensuring that doors are not propped open during the day? What disciplinary measures will you take if you find that staff is not following security protocols?" I believe, and I flipped the paper, so I believe most of that was addressed, except for that last question.
Yeah, he also, he sent me an email, and some of those I said actually would be answered tonight, and then I would respond to him with things that weren't answered or if he had more questions, so I'll take his sheet and make sure I get back to him within the seven to twelve.
Definitely send him the link, too, to the YouTube video so he could watch the...
He was here.
He was here, right?
Okay.
Oh, that was the gentleman.
Yes, that was the gentleman. I'm sorry, I should recognize that.
Yeah.
He's here with his wife and... Okay, so second side of the page is, "If you are planning to arm the teachers, how are they supposed to respond when trained professional enforcement professionals at Uvalde took 70 minutes to enter that school? How are door locks tested and when were the most recent tests done? Teacher firearm access is a concern. How do we prevent unauthorized use of said firearm? PVLA, can this be an option for all grades given the circumstance? How long till security upgrades are complete? Are there any plans to include the elementary schools in having patrol, our SROs, I think you want to, you said RSOs, monitor their locations?" So thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Dr. Smolik will get back to you to answer the questions that we had not already answered. Okay, our next one is Amanda Ross, 9157 Snow Road, Palmer Heights, Ohio. She has security questions, concerns regarding safety, but I have nothing really to read. So I think she wanted to speak prior to agenda of the resolution, which we had none, so it's very confusing.
I believe she wanted to speak at the first, at the four...
Oh, she wanted to speak at the four o'clock meeting, which we do now have.
Yeah, work sessions do not, for anybody watching, work sessions do not have public participation.
Can I have your quick comment about what you read? I can see how a, somebody that saw that thing on Channel 5 or wherever it was, where they gave it.
With it, yeah.
Where your first instinct would be, "This school's getting $20,000, it means it's not secure." I can see that going through a parent's head, so...
This is the repeater thing, right? This is that, that right there.
Yeah, yeah, we get how much each school was getting, because if you looked at it, it was like 2,000, 1,000, 2,000, 2,000, and 20-some thousand, so as a parent, you go, oh, wow, they know that there's no security at their school. It's like, I get how that could go through a parent's head, so...
Yeah, we answered that during that meeting, and then I talked to him again afterwards. So we're all set. So that was, concludes that portion.
I do want to say, I appreciate, sorry, I forgot his last name. Mr. McLean, you know, I just love to see people that, and maybe he's jumping on social media, I don't know, but, you know, he came and he watched what we do, and he's asking great questions, and we appreciate that type of active citizenship. And we always appreciate when people give us the opportunity to tell our version of events, you know, so that they can get it from us firsthand. So thank you to Mr. McLean and your family for the time you invested with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. So we don't need executive session. So, yeah, he would be one of those people that has his oars in the water, sir.
Great reference.
All right, so growing a boat.
Make it happen.
Growing a boat. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-08-310 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-08-310. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Ratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody.